Evening everyone, all of your board supervisor meeting for Thursday, September 4th. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a prayer.
Heavenly Father, I thank you for all that are gathered here this evening. I thank you for the township. Continue to put your hands over this township and bless it as you have done in the past and well into the future. Bless all those that are here this evening, watch over our first responders especially, and thank you for their service. Heavenly Newman pray.
Well, there was one executive session held this evening before our meeting. In specific, we spoke about police service contract for Denver Borough and the collective bargaining agreement with our police department. And second topic was settlement discussion with pending land use appeals. This evening's meeting is being recorded for rebroadcast purposes on YouTube. At this moment, we have a five-minute per person limit for comment on agenda items. Please come forward, state the name, that way we have for the meeting minutes. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. Denver Wholesale Foods. Good evening.
All right, good evening. Mr. Chairman, Dwight Miller from Gilroy Craywell Pest. Good to see everyone. As you know, a few months ago, we were here to talk about a potential text amendment for Denver Wholesale Foods. Gary's here, Richard Hoover from Hoover Building Specialists is here as well. And some of the feedback we got at that meeting was, you know, come back maybe with a little bit of a sketch plan. I think there was some concerns about how this is in the look and give us a little more information. So that's what we're doing. We wanted to just swing back around before we kind of started the formal process. I do have a handout from the exhibits that I had previously included with the letter. Just in case you wanted something in front of you, although it looks like you might have all these. What's that? I will when I'm done if you can give it to you then. So let me just quickly give you a little bit of a background, just so you kind of remember what we had discussed before. As you know, Denver Wholesale Foods is a local family-owned business. They are a discount grocery supplier and provide a lot of food products at a discounted price to local grocers. And they can really serve a need in the community, in the county. So they're really looking to try and stay in the area. They're in Efforto right now and they're just simply out of room. And so they do have properties. You look at Exhibit A, this is the kind of the hodgepodge of lots that they own. And they would like to be able to build a facility here in East Picado Township that would be essentially complementing what they do in Efforto. If you look at Exhibit B, that shows you a little bit of the zoning, which the red is the commercial, general commercial district and the white, I guess that's kind of a blue, is the light industrial district. And as we talked before, if you flip to Exhibit C, not only is this area split lot zone, which means there's two different zoning districts on these properties, but there's also some challenges from environmental constraints. The last page there shows the property and all the green areas essentially are floodplain, wetlands, or have other constraints that would make it very difficult or not impossible to put buildings or structures here on that. So as you can see, what they have is a property with partially zoned to allow what they want to do. The commercial district does not allow for warehouses. And so what they are exploring is a potential text amendment that would be very focused, limited to essentially properties that have these characteristics. They're split zoned and that they have a certain number of acreage, 40 acres, and they have lot carnage that has access to an arterial or major collector road. As we discussed last time, that is mainly to try and avoid unintended consequences. My experience as a collective officials, they typically like what's being proposed, but they're worried about what they can't see in the future. So trying to fashion any type of text amendment to allow Denver Wholesale Foods to go forward, but not create other surprises in the future is essentially what we've been trying to do. Part of the feedback we got last time was that, you know, there are certain types of building structures that are a little more attractive to the public and there are certain types of buildings that aren't quite attractive. And I guess there's been a few, should I say, unattractive buildings constructed maybe recently in the township. So part of what we wanted to do was go back as a team to think through how this could be structured and built in a way that would, I mean, it's still going to be a warehouse, so there's no getting around that, but look like it fits into the community a little better with some architectural renderings and designs. The idea being, if we can get some feedback from the supervisors that, yeah, this is the direction, then any proposal would include some architectural requirements in the text amendment so that if the board can find to move forward with considering a text amendment, it wouldn't be kind of like, oh, this is what we showed you when we wanted to convince you to do this and then when we convince you to do it, we have something that looks totally different. We have to build into the text amendment certain standards so that it could be enforced down the road as well. So I don't know, Richard, if you want to just kind of explain the process you went through. So these, the renderings, and then there's also some elevations in the floor plan were put together by Richard's team. And if you want to just come up and maybe walk through these, that would be great. Yeah, that's fine.
Well, you have these renderings in your, in what you're ready to see, some bigger ones. But again, we looked at what can we do to try to make it a little more attractive and look more commercial rather than a big warehouse. And so we tried to incorporate different parts. This one here is at the entrance, proposed entrance. And added some glass, this would be some office areas, what have you. Tried to make this kind of look like your typical warehouse, add some wood grain panels, different colors. I think you want to pass them around.
I did do a smaller figure packing, I think you should have that.
Yeah, I have.
And that is, and this is one of just the full length that would maybe be along the puzzle right now on 272. We have some landscaping between the road and the setback, different materials again. Incorporating some wood grain panels, some other windows, what have you, again. Picture of that. This view is simply coming in the entrance, coming into the site. Again, glass, office, trying to make things attractive. And yes, as Dwight said, it is a warehouse, we can't get away from that. But the, again, what can we do instead of that's the point we just had there. The, is the longer stretch, well, 272, again, doing some glass inserts in there to break it up. We are wanting to, you know, customers are willing to spend some more money than normal to try to make this thing look a little better, so.
Is that the proposed setback distance? I'm not sure where the actual setback would be. So is that 272 and that's the setback off the 10?
272, that is the setback. When you're doing the, yeah, that grass there is actually on the other side of the road, so it's kind of a setback. So that is more, that is, I should look at site plan, is it 50 feet or 35 feet? Whatever it is, it's what we are proposing, whatever the current.
So you're trying to use up as much real estate towards the front because the wetlands.
Correct. And so whatever that's all right.
So we're going to go like. Do you have a map, do you have a map like this that would show where the building would be on here? So you're actually looking at something like this, is that correct then? Parking around here. Very important.
So we would be, the entrance would be pushed over a little bit, maybe towards the side. So that would be the wall there. All the docks, if you look at the floor climbing elevation would be along the side away from 272. There would be nothing visible of trucks or docks to 272.
So maybe facing industrial park.
They would be, so the building would be facing here.
I was just curious.
And the trucks would be this way here.
I was trying to look overlaying three different pages with the wetlands to the property ownership and look. You don't have one that shows all three of these pictures there?
I kind of put them together. There you go. I outlined and read the property and highlighted all the wetlands. And then I put the commercial.
So the problem was with the residential across the road facing the commercial, there would have to, again, I can't speak for the residents out there. But if I was a resident, I'd rather be facing a nice building with landscaping than a lot of car turns or anything else or is it? This way there's no noise, no activity towards that.
So with the extent of the environmental conditions, are you able to use any of the industrial zone land for anything?
Yes, my understanding is that at least for potentially some parking and stormwater facilities, that could be used. We had talked, so part of what we did was we had game and sons. If you look at this, you know, my idea, and it's always a little scary for an attorney trying to be engineered, was, you know, could you swing the building and kind of get back in here in this area? And there were two problems with that. These little slivers, these fingers become challenging. And there's a lot of slopes on the site. So part of what they tried to do by keeping the building towards the front was to use that to keep the height at the front facing the road lower and then use kind of like a bank barn, use that slope to their advantage in the rear. So as I understand it, the trucks go around to the back and it's actually two stories in the back, one story in the front. And, you know, I think that's kind of where you see the building as the chairman had kind of sketched it out, you know. But, so the answer to Mr. Green's question is, there would be some use back here, but it is more for support facilities in terms of the stormwater and things like that. Obviously, there's a power line there. So it just really made it a challenge to try and get much even back as a property.
And there's no need to connect to that area, to join the properties?
No, you know, there is industrial way back up there, but there really wouldn't be any good way to connect to the industrial way part. So there had been some discussions of getting out to Curst Road on the side and my understanding is that corner is going to be used for propane or industrial use if they got some approvals for that. But that became more challenging because there's some environmental issues with some of the properties back there and it was not clear. So that's not totally off the table, but I think at this point, they're looking at really the main entrance coming off 272.
So as risky as lawyers being engineers is lawyers being market tenants. And what you designed is a really nice industrial warehouse building. Did you consider designing a warehouse building that looks like something that could be a commercial?
Well, I think the intent was to try and get something that kind of bridge the gap. When you look at what's up on the screen now, that area would be a kind of an office space we had talked about that could be used not just by Denver Wholesale Foods for their offices, but possibly for commercial uses. There is a lower level, so it's a two-story office commercial space, potentially something like a, you know, a fitness center that wouldn't necessarily mind having a lower level.
And I'm not saying occupancies of commercial uses, but, and I'm going to get my bona fides on the table. I grew up across the street from United States Steel Plant, so, you know, across the street doesn't bother me. But for example, in Marietta, we did a 52-unit senior housing project and made it look like three Marietta townhouses. You know, the vertical Victorian townhouses that Marietta has on their main street. So as you're driving by, if you really look at it, you can see it's one building, but if you're just driving by, the side of your ride looks like three buildings. So, I mean, it's, you know, I don't want to adopt Manhattan Township's form-based code, but, you know, that could be an approach in a split zone lot.
Yeah, I mean, I think what we really would like to do is get some feedback from the supervisors and township staff. You know, my experience is having discussions before you start the whole process is way more productive than starting the process and finding out that's not really what folks were looking for. So, you know, we would like to start putting together a proposed text amendment petition and start that process. We just were hoping that we could get some feedback if, you know, if, as Mr. Green suggested, maybe we need to do a little more design here or if this is getting close to what the supervisors would like to see. I think there was a good faith effort to try and put something together that didn't just look like a big box warehouse building. The dilemma is, it's a warehouse, so there's always going to be a larger building footprint. If you can divide it up with some different facades on the front, put some windows in it, I think it gets closer to at least fitting in more along a commercial roadway than if it's just your typical no windows, concrete side, big box warehouse, so.
And again, you had three meetings this week, I had three meetings this week. It's not so much what people want to do, it's what they see, it's what they hear.
I certainly appreciate the relationship with Denver Foods and everything that you've brought to the community, for sure. And we love the chance to try to discuss this and keep you here, that's fantastic. In the last meeting, I had mentioned that, and I think Mr. Mitchell had also mentioned it, that that's prime commercial space in East Picado. And I had said something about is it possible that we thought about, you know, keeping this, you know, this footprint here, maybe setting it back a little bit and throwing commercial, you know, I'm not telling you how to do business, but putting some kind of commercial in the front there that you could lease out as part of your bigger building. I don't know if that went across the desk to the engineers and the architects or not, if that was even a thought. But then you'd be utilizing commercial space in the front. You already have your entrance way completing ahead. The other thing I brought up last time you guys presented was, and dot 272. I don't know if you've had those conversations yet, but I can't speak for Pendot, but I just know from folks that have been here before that they're going to ask for a lot on that portion of 272. And so if we could mix, if we're already have to go to that extent to quit that building there, maybe, just maybe, again, I'm just speaking, putting some small commercial spaces across four or five, four, I don't know how long we're talking, how many, how many feet is that across the front?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred, so it's, okay, almost 300 yards. So you could certainly put, well, that'd be a lot more than just three or four commercial spaces in the front side, but.
The problem is, what they were saying is if they do that, they can't push the building further back because of all the land that they can't.
Well, that's why I was wondering, I see these little fingers of wetlands that you're talking about back here. That's what I was wondering, how deep is the building? If it's 800 feet wide, how deep are you going? Is it obvious?
Well, it's about three.
Three thirty, three forty.
Three thirty, a lot of making sure there on the other.
Okay.
One of the things you have to remember is, Richard, really sink this down into the ground. This, the front is 15 feet down in the ground, so it wouldn't be as high. Because I think that was a concern, not being so high.
Absolutely.
The name for the meeting minutes? Your name for the meeting?
Gary Martin.
I'm sorry, yes.
And to your.
Gary's.
We did hear with the concern was, we did have a pretty in-depth with engineering and architectural and to try to incorporate commercial along the front, which we'd love to do if we could have, it almost killed the warehouse because we have to get parking, especially if it's up on a different level or we do retain the old drop it. And then that pushes the warehouse back and.
And it's probably the problem is these little wetland fingers in the backside here.
So we end up with, it's killing a lot of warehouse space and warehousing that Richard depicts.
Share your name again.
Richard. So that's why we did propose some of this area on the, at the entrance side there to try to accommodate some of that, provide some commercial, but to do it along 272 was very, I would say, probably killing time.
I'm just thinking from an aesthetics perspective, and you're still using this mixed use as opposed to... But see, this little, this little finger right here is what's really the luxury of mine.
And it's continued slope, so it just.
Oh, okay.
We, believe me, we'd love to try to accommodate more.
So that whole area down there, there's a field below that little finger. You know, I think you can kind of see that on there. That will all be stormwater retention, that'll take all that up. There is actually a significant acreage there that is not wetland.
So you have to create more with that, basically.
I guess.
That's laners, the stormwater basin.
Yeah, that's the non-engineered.
That's what I refer to as well.
I do, you know, I'm the positive, I do think that looks a lot better than the, you know, the overlay looks much better than a massive warehouse like we have right here. But, so it does look much better and I do know that there's an absolute cost to that. So again, I appreciate you working and trying to make this work here, so. Yeah. I like the direction we're going with how it looks, I really do. And I, you know, really would like to try to work towards having you guys in the township, just trying to figure out the after me and.
So it sounds to me like you maybe would like us to see if there's any way we can integrate some commercial space into the facility that looks commercial as well, outside and inside.
I mean, my, honestly, this is 272. If we had commercial space, if there was an ability to put commercial space up front here, you had some small shops, you know, whatever across, I mean, eight, that's 300 yards, that's ginormous. And that's 300 yards of less commercial space we have amongst our, in our most, in our best commercially zoned area and, you know, not right now currently, but it is on commercial, it could be very good for the township. That looks much better. It does not look commercial to Mr., you know, it's kind of hazy, it's kind of sort of close, but I don't know.
So is having, is having a commercial tenant in your building with you something that you might find disruptive?
We would because it's a lot of truck traffic. I mean, all, most of our traffic would be trucks. And I think that we can only put one entrance on 272.
So mixing the.
And to mix that.
Put that traffic into a single access, yeah.
That would discourage me in the sense of being able to ever get this accomplished because of all the factors there. You, you know, we're shooting for 200,000 square feet. The site only allows for that, that's the max that the site allows for according to our engineers. So, you know, the more we, if you add a commercial, you also have to add a corresponding amount of car parking spaces.
It really should have separate access.
And you should.
Cars and trucks.
So we're kind of, as owners, we don't really see that as a viable option, but we'd have to, we'd have to, if that was the only way that we could get what we want. But I'm thinking, you know, we're looking then maybe at 100,000 square feet that we could get. I'm not sure that we would bother for that.
Where's your current facility?
133,000.
And you're trying to do this to 200,000?
To 200,000, yeah.
Not as a subsidy, but as a compliment.
Compliment, yeah, we can't move where we are. We have a lot of frozen storage there. We're not building frozen storage here. That's much more expensive to build, of course. And we've already invested all that money over there. And so, yeah, we, we're keeping that. Actually, this would be dry storage. We have a large section of our existing warehouse was built for refrigeration, but we're using it for dry. As soon as that dry is out of there, it's going to be turned into refrigerated space. You see the trade-off there.
Guess it's my turn. I'm just spitballing.
Yeah, that's the topic, this is why we're here.
So I'm glad to have you guys here. Show me which problem I have.
I have a layout.
Yeah, save the best for later.
Yeah, I'll echo some of Dan's thoughts. You know, I appreciate the ability and want to make this look very appealing from the road, it does. So I got to compliment you on that. We're normally here trying to reflect the needs of the community in a lot of ways and you have your special niche there. But you're working with one of the last open pieces of land along our stretch of 272. And we keep hearing from residents, they want some specialized shopping. You know, it's a consistent thought process that keeps coming back to us on the board. And, you know, this kind of use, as you just said, Mr. Martin, is, you know, doesn't really fit into what you're trying to design here. So, you know, I would like to see some kind of compromise here to what, there could be some kind of commercial value to it as well. And you can get what you want one way or the other too. You know, I'm not sure how that can be accomplished, but, you know, we're here to answer the residents and however we can manage to get that done, so be it. And, you know, I know there is a thirst in the community to see a dirt pile real way too, so. I think that's setting boxes us a little bit too.
We don't get used to that.
We don't get enough snow anymore to make that a slate. But, yeah, I, you know, I think you're headed in the right direction here, but is there some kind of middle ground here where there could be some, some kind of, you know, if you're talking dry storage, could we go higher yet or you're maxed out in height that way?
We're, we're going as high as we can.
Okay.
That's why we sunk it into the ground so it doesn't look as high. You follow me on that?
That's perfect.
So, you know.
Why don't you tell me what a second story would be?
I.
I'd be in the neighbor's backyard. Across the street, as our solicitor said, across the street, it doesn't matter, so is that your thought?
No, my point, my, my point is, I grew up across the street looking at another steel mill. But most people are concerned about what they're going to see across the street, not so much what's in that building. If it was a pretty steel mill.
With flowers.
Yeah. And without a hammer.
Wow.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, you know, again, I, I've just drawn on my experience. We moved a, in, in, uh, an electronics assembly used into an old retail department store. And one of the conditions on my client was you got to keep it looking like a retail department store. They moved, we moved a siding and roofing business into an old horse farm. And one of the conditions was you got to keep the buildings looking like an old horse farm. So, you know, if this looked like, and I'm not saying we should do this, if this looked like a strip center shopping center along the front, but it's really a warehouse, that would be one way of accomplishing a commercial look in a commercial disparate for an industrial use. Now, that doesn't satisfy some of the other comments that we only have so much prime commercial land. And we do hear a lot of demand from the residents for more commercial uses, more restaurants, more shopping, and however, the, the culture and the economy is we're not getting more restaurants and we're not getting more shopping.
Well, you know, I'll echo off of that, you know, owning a restaurant, it's not cheap to build a restaurant on a track, a small track, you know, I'm looking at, I'm looking at this right now, and the first track is just a little bit there. And the, and it goes the whole way in the back here, and that's all yellow. The only track that's only truly in commercial is the middle track. And if I got to go there, tear down that house, put up a restaurant, do the road improvements, I'm over two million dollars in a hole. And, and if I'm not busy, I just lost two million bucks.
Well, and, and also the reason I asked Mr. Martin about putting some commercial uses on the property, Dwight will tell you. We can start naming names, there are countless mixed-use developments where either the commercial space is being, or the residential space is not being utilized. Residential above commercial has a hard time selling even in the downtown, let alone in Strasburg Township.
Looking, looking at our area, and I've said this, I said it at our last meeting, um, my opinion where the restaurants will go and we need them is on the boulevard. Uh, have a developer come in, have a developer develop the property, build a pad site. You're going to get a McDonald's, you're going to get a Starbucks, you're going to get, uh, another commercial chain.
Will, will.
And, and that's where the restaurants are going to come. And that's great, because we need it, I've always said it. Uh, but to, 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 to think that we're going to get another restaurant along two seventy-two, it's not.
The development costs.
I don't think it's going to happen, because of all the improvements you got to do on two seventy-two, and you got to purchase the property. And then you got to go pay what it costs to build a, a place right now, it's not going to happen. So I get what, what you guys are saying about the whole, it's, it's three hundred yards of, uh, commercial along two seventy-two. But personally, and I'm against warehouses, let, you know, I've said it from day one. Um, the look of this is great, the look of this is great, I, I personally like it a lot, it doesn't look like a warehouse. If they improve a little bit on the, the two seventy-two side a little bit more, kind of like when we pull in, I think people will second guess it all the time if it even is a warehouse.
Right.
Um, but we, we have to take in consideration, something you said when I first started almost four years ago now, is every property is unique in its own way. Meaning, you know, this has its, all these obstacles here, and all these different property lines. And this may be the best site that we can get something like this on in the township. We're, we, by the time, if we were to deny this, just throwing this out there, and Mr. Martin were to try to sell this, by the time, um, a McDonald's or a Wawa comes in, there are going to be a couple million dollars in it just for the property. And then they got to go develop it. They're not going to do it, they are not going to do it. It's impossible.
If it, if it were attractive potential development plan, somebody would have already.
It would have already happened.
So again, I start with my, sorry, Mr. Martin, I start with my starting comment of, I appreciate the work that you're putting in to stay here. Because I understand everything he's talking about. When I'm spitballing and trying to figure out commercial space just because of this exactly what Mr. Mitchell said it is, some of our remaining commercial, commercial zone right along two seventy-two. But I also see what Lorenzo's saying, not give us commercial. After asking you guys here at this meeting this evening, why you couldn't set it back, and why you couldn't do it across the front. It all makes perfect sense. So I guess from my perspective, in my opinion, uh, one of the largest warehouses you see from seventy-eight up in Hamburg isn't actually, it doesn't look like when it's called Cabello's, right? I don't know how many thousands of square feet Cabello's is, but it doesn't look like, it looks like a great big log cabin. And I'm not saying that's what we need to do here. This still, this still hints of a warehouse to me, and, and I know we're not going to make it. But I think, I think the biggest concerns that we get from a warehouse is being built is what it looks like. That's the biggest thing. If you made this thing look like a log cabin, I'm just throwing it, I'm just kidding right now, but if you made it look more like a log cabin, it made it three hundred yards longer. Mr. Kream's comment before, it's, it made it look like three duplexes, but it's actually all one building. If you made it, you know, spiced it up just like, uh, you do in a theater play in high school, and just put some different passion on it, that's all that anybody's going to see when they're driving by? You know, I, I think you have a much better proposal at that point. Um, I do understand the land constructions. Um, I was curious, as you asked before, about a second entrance out the back, because I see there's a road there. I also see that it looks like there's something on the other side. So I guess the question for the engineer would be, or the architect, is if that's all becoming water retention in a spot that's not, that's not, uh, wetlands now, does that cut off your access to be able to get out the backside then altogether?
Well, yeah, there's a, there's a power line, and there's a creek. There, there are.
There's no way to get stuff out.
Well, you can't cross the power line easement without their permission.
This is just a road, road.
You're saying to go out to the industrial park.
Oh, I was just asking, is it, is it even a possibility?
We never even considered it, we didn't think that was a possibility.
It looks like you have a break in your wetlands around the backside there, so it's getting that. And the property looks like it cuts off that little corner, making green, whoever that runs on the back just to be able to get a road up the back. I'm just, again, I'm not an architect or engineer, I'm just looking at the colors, the pretty colors here, I forgot my crayons, so. But anyway.
Well, yeah.
If, if we agreed to have further presentation, and you guys further down this project, and then you're working with Pendel along two seventy-two, that might be a, a helpful viable option up the backside, because I will get that.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, so, good to know, Mr. Martin.
Yeah, I wanted to comment a little bit on some of the discussion here, um, so we did get a lot of calls about buying this property. That's, the people see that we own forty acres, and I think for the most part, they see that there's a significant amount of that as light industrial. And so we've gotten a lot of calls for, they, they want to build warehouses. I don't think we've ever got any calls about using it for commer, you know, restaurants or, we've never got any calls about that, for what it's worth. I don't think that that's, from what I'm hearing, that's not really where they're looking to put that type of thing. Would, would customers like that, want to be in the same building as a, as a warehouse? I'm not sure. Whether that would be a viable option.
Well, it doesn't sound like it's viable in this specific location anyway, because your depth is just not there.
My suggestion is, I think this has been extremely helpful feedback, um, you know, let us, let us process it a little bit more. To me, there's two questions. One is, in terms of the look, can we improve on what I hear is a good start, but maybe not quite what you, you want to see? And then the second thing is, is there any viable way to reach a compromise that maybe has some commercial space? Um, but still allows Denver Wholesale Foods to meet their objectives with their needs? And, and see, and, you know, we might come back in a month or two and say, we really tried, but, you know, this is really all we can do. And then, you know, that'll be up to the board to decide if you think you still want us to, to move forward and consider it. Or maybe there is something that could be done to, you know, at least try and have some commercial. I think that would be, the challenge will be truck traffic coming in, vehicle traffic for, you know, whatever it is. You know, whether it's a, you know, just a small mom and pop shop, retail store, or pizza shop. But let us, let us process it and see if there's something we can come back to you with that, um, you know. This has been extremely helpful, this is why we were here to, to try and get a sense of what we're looking for.
I agree with Lorenzo's comments about the development of a commercial pad site, especially at that right there, in a place where everything. I do think it would be extremely difficult, uh, just based upon what you're saying with the depth of the property. So we don't need, you don't necessarily need to beat, and for my, on my behalf, you don't need to beat that drum too hard, because I understand completely that that's going to be very difficult. Especially if it cuts into the space that you need of a two hundred thousand, because you're landlocked. I would willing to bet that anybody that's calling you to look, to put warehouses there don't realize that the wetlands are in the back there.
Right. That's, yeah, I agree with you completely.
And, and, you know, and I, and I understand Jeff's sentiment as well, but the days of big box stores and going somewhere to shop are dwindling. People don't even go to the restaurants anymore with their door dashes. So I don't know how much stores people are really looking for anymore to go to. So I hate to say that, but I, I appreciate walking into a store, but I think those days are slowly dwindling as well. So all through Lorenzo's point, we have something that's viable for a specific space like this, I'd like to see possible further conversation in my opinion. So I think, to just comment on your summary here, I think aesthetic value, you've done a very nice job there. I mean, I can't fault that at all. But just, uh, I, I don't see restaurants or anything like that coming into a site like this. What we have is, is one little strip mall down, down the road here with, um, small businesses in each one. And it is continual, I mean, if something goes out, I mean, there's somebody in there just like that. We had our state representative looking for a place to put his office in our township, there was nothing. He had to go to Adamstown. You know, I hear people, well, can we get a dry cleaner or something in the township? Doesn't take a lot of space, but it's a, uh, you know, we don't want to have to go out the other side of effort for that. And, you know, I, I think those kind of needs are there.
There's some flat space, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Could be offices, could be dry cleaner, could be.
It's kind of just thinking, that's what I was thinking, you look at Myers-Pires, which Jeff was talking about.
Yeah.
And what they've done there, and they've just, they've got a bunch of small, you know, fourteen hundred square foot.
Yep.
Spaces up front, but if that's not viable, the earth push, you may, because it will only drive it, frontage, maybe it doesn't work. But, yeah, I'm, I'm willing to continue to talk, listen.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate feedback, very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again. This does look nice.
Moving on, we have action items. August twenty-first, meeting minutes, any change in there, guys?
Yes, sir.
You made your, my change, you made a direction, sir. Make a motion to approve the August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes as presented.
Sir.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, next up, we got the recreation board appointment. Uh, Mr. Alan Frye put in a, uh, letter to serve on the record, we've had an opening there for a place at a time. I don't think there's any other person better fit for that job, because the pool, the pool wouldn't have operated so smoothly if it wasn't for Mr. Frye and our road crew this year, thank you for that. Last day was Monday, thank God, right? We're going to cover on Monday.
Public announcement, thank you.
I publicly thank you for going over there and checking the water every day, and making sure the baby pool and all the chemicals are safe. And fixing, uh, the beds, the, the.
Lounge.
The lounge chairs, so we didn't have to buy new ones.
She didn't know that, you weren't supposed to say anything.
I know, but I know all the stuff he does.
And, uh, anytime, anytime there's been a problem, you know, the road crews call you, you've always been there to support them and, and help them fix leaks and, and all that. So thank you for that.
And again, I second that thought process, by the way.
Thank you.
We've done a lot of good things up there.
With, with the record, I think you, you'll, you'll be a great fit there, just with your knowledge of the pool and, you know, Cub Scouts, all that. So, you know, you kind of know what, what we're looking for, and how we want to improve our parks and stuff for the, the kids and whatnot throughout the township, so. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Alan Frye to the recreation board for the remainder of the term, which will end on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and we have one more opening on there, I think, correct? We have one more opening on there, so if anyone's interested, please, uh.
Two more.
Do more.
Two more.
Two more openings on there, so please submit a letter to manager@ect.town.
Thank you, Mr. Frye.
Moving on to interfund transfer bill list and payroll.
Interfund back at Calista bills, hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and eighty-five cents for the week of August twenty-two. And two hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and sixteen cents for the week of August twenty-ninth. Any questions on either one of those? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have a developers fund list of bills in an amount of five thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents for the week of August twenty-ninth. Is there any question there? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have an electronic payment list of bills for the pay period between August tenth and August twenty-third in the amount of ninety-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. I make a motion to approve.
Sir.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that's the, the report for this lady.
Thank you, Sheriff. New business, gentlemen, guide. I do. If anyone's wondering about our police in township sign along two seventy-two that keeps flickering, we, we have been in contact with PPNL for the past three weeks now. We had our electrician out there, they had said it was a meter problem. So we called PPNL, they closed our ticket today, said it's not a meter problem, it's a sign problem. So we're, I guess we're going to have, uh, our electrician go back out, make sure it's their problem again, and probably open up another ticket. But we are on top of that. Before I went on vacation, I did do a drive around and got pole numbers off of all the burnt lights, uh, in our township. I had a list of over fifty of them.
Thank you.
It's all good. Yeah, it took, it took about two hours.
And no reverses, but thank you.
Thank you.
Waiting for a reversion.
But I did send the list to PPNL, and they said that the list had been completed. I, I did notice there are a couple other ones that have that around. So, it'll soon be time to do another loop, and we can get that squared away as well.
Thanks, sir.
I would like for Rich to reach out to Rec Knock.
Hi, sir.
Yeah, to see, give us an update on the Cayman School Bridge, where we're at with that. I know we paid a couple of those a couple of months ago.
Engineering bills.
Engineering bills. We haven't, we haven't really seen an update, and I know we have our budget meeting scheduled, so we kinda wanna know if we're supposed to be budgeting money to repair, to repair that or what's going on there. And last thing, what are we gonna do with the compost site? I'm tired of coming here Saturdays to either open it or close it. I, I just feel like, I know budget season's coming up. I know part-time, well, not part-time, interim Rich. I had kinda talked to him about it, and I just wanna get ideas from you guys on what we can do to, to better it. Are we going back to the gate that we never sold and getting a new mechanism on opening and closing it, charging the residents, is it still gonna be free? I just, I don't wanna come on my Saturday when I got family things to do, I coach soccer, come here to open the gate at nine o'clock or come close it at three o'clock. I just, I got other things to do. And I've been doing it for the past six, seven months now, maybe more.
Oh, you were in Italy for a month.
Well, that's.
Had to take a flight back.
That was just for chat.
All right. Thank you, Dan, for helping me with this for chat.
You're welcome, sir. You got us the key to it.
Oh, no. Anyway, I think we can work some ideas through the budget process. Maybe we can reach Sickler out, had some ideas, maybe you can investigate some, some cost and, and some of those upgrades. I will say that I think we've only noticed one violation.
Don't advertise it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, with, with the scrutiny that's been there, somebody decided to take their deck apart with treated lumber and leave it back there. So, that created cleanup process for, for the public works and, you know, helped out with that.
Thanks for Paul's theory, you're doing that.
Yeah. Nothing like helping out a little bit here and there, I guess, but anyway. I think it's, it's been fairly orderly. I, I look at the pile and see that it's smaller than what it was this time last year. What the reason is, I don't know, maybe it's that we're stopping some of the illegal dumping that was going on, and they had 24/7 access with the cars. I don't know. But I think whatever gets done, it's gonna take more surveillance and probably some, if we go back to the card system, you know, probably some pulling time to track down the offenders that come up, so. But that's why we have a zoning officer, so anyway.
I feel like we should look into a system where the resident will either scan their ID when, when the thing goes in, when they go in. And there's gotta be cameras at the back of the pile, because it seems like there's always, at the back of the pile is where there's, there's lumber, or the other day there was a whole bunch of apples, the other day there was plastic containers, the, the plants. It's always at the back of the pile. So, we gotta have access up there, maybe a trench, whatever it is. I have heard a lot of compliments from residents, however, with the bins we put in. You know, that, that, you know, the, let's call it topsoil, it's not topsoil, but topsoil and stone and milling and.
Mulch.
Mulch, you know, a lot of people have said many good things about that. So, that, you know, obviously it's been free to us, free to them, it's not free to us, we're actually paying to mulch it up, but it, it's been free to the resident to grab. So, they've been very thankful for that, so that, that's great. But I just feel like we need to do some kind of security system and a gate system for that, so we don't have to constantly be doing that or the manager getting here in the morning and unlocking it and locking it at the end of the day. Very simple things, but we just gotta look into it and start with an initiative.
Budget season is coming.
Well, I'm thrilled.
I think we can keep this simple, doesn't have to be rock science.
I don't have anything else for new business.
I guess the Meadow Brook project is starting to move along. A lot of residents have stepped up and replaced their curb, and thank you to them for, for helping the process along. And I guess we're, we're staying on track for blacktopping to start next month.
Actually, it should start before that. My understanding is that concrete crew will begin starting around the 15th of September, and then we expect the paving to begin sometime around 20 seconds or so. So, it's gonna happen sooner rather than later. Expectation is they will complete the project by mid-October, which is well within the guidelines that we have to follow for the refueling. So, I think we're, I think we're in great shape. And again, I echo that, sir, as manager, that appreciate the residents that jumped on this and worked together, worked with the contractor, that, that works.
We're getting there.
Good. A lot of work, but that's good. Anything else? Oh, I think that's old business.
Hill Road is progressing.
Yeah, that's, that's a good update there. Rich, manager Rich met with Pure Cycle over here. They had a meeting this week with our engineer on the New Hill Road to go out, with Fred Ebersol to go out here, and one that's gonna tie in right here at the building. They're thinking they might break ground yet here in September, so they'll start moving dirt. However, there might be some delay, because we're waiting on the big mast arms for the traffic light. But a lot of the work can be done, but it won't be able to be utilized until the traffic light goes in. So, if you start seeing dirt getting moved next door, that's because we're moving along for the New Hill Road. That would be huge. Great improvement.
Thanks for bringing that up, I forgot about that.
Sure. All right, you guys good?
I'm good now.
Public comment, a five-minute per person limit for comment on non-agenda items. Please come forward, state your name for the meeting minutes. Seeing none? Next meeting will be Thursday, September 18th at 7:00 PM here at the Township Building. I will make a motion for adjournment next meeting.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Who birds?